Continue to order. Please join the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, living in justice.
Proceed to our business. We have the minutes of the regular session of April 6, 2017.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes of the regular session of Wednesday, April 6, 2017.
Ricky, you got a second there?
Motion made, second by Selectman Gooey.
Extension. Now, we have the minutes of March 8, regular session. We actually have amendment to that. The amendment would be, what was that on the principal assessor?
Page four. There's, on page four, correct me if I'm wrong, Margie, but there's like three asterisks that show up, second bullet down under, and then there's another one further down within the motion. And so, Margie, can you explain exactly what was out of the minutes that needed to be put in there?
Yeah, it was during the salary administration hearing about the principal assessor's salary being raised to cover the 2% raise that he'll be getting. And it was, it was discussed and voted, but I missed it.
Questions? I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to amend the minutes of the regular session of March 8, 2017 on page four. Under salary administration plan hearing, recommended and approved that the maximum salary for the principal assessor be amended to $85,000 on the salary schedule for FY18.
Second.
Next, we have anyone with citizen concerns? There are none. Go on to the communication announcements. The Holbrook Public Works Department will conduct a hydrant flushing program during the week of May 8 through May 12, 2017. Majority of the work will be done between the hours 9:00 p.m. and 3:00 a.m. The activity will cause discolored water in varying degrees in all sections of town. Persons who experience water discoloration should clear their water system by opening the cold water faucet for several minutes and then wait about an hour. If the water still is not clear, they should repeat the flushing procedure. Public Works Department cannot be responsible for any damages incurred as a result of the activity which is necessary in normal maintenance function of our water distribution system. Should further information be desired, please call 767-1800 between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. From Benjamin E. Cord, Superintendent. Next, we have under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 60, Section 77B, Town of Holbrook through its tax title custodian will set a public auction on Wednesday, May 17 at 12:00 p.m. The following described parcels located in Holbrook, Massachusetts, 19 Richard Road, parcel ID 51-56, 115 Union Street, parcel 14-109, 36 King Road, parcel 27-17-1, 56 Quincy Street and 58 Quincy Street, parcel IDs 47-39-1 and 47-39-2, and 44 Clover Road, parcel 26-124. Registration for the auction will begin at 11:30 a.m. at the Holbrook Town Hall, 50 North Franklin Street, Holbrook, Mass. Further details and information about the auction, please visit the auctioneer's website at www.zicoes.com. The telephone number is 508-842-9000. The Holbrook Town Forest Committee has scheduled a Saturday morning hike for the May 6th, well, Saturday, May 6 at 9:00 a.m. Please meet at the Sotegren-McKay entrance, Park Drive. Each month, we'll be exploring a new trail so we can explore all that Holbrook Town Forest has to offer. Please be sure to bring along some water, dress appropriately for the weather, and bring a friend who may never have been in our beautiful forest if you can. If there are heavy rains, the walk may be canceled. We will notify via email and Facebook. Find us on Facebook at Holbrook Town Forest or call 781-767-4312. Next, we have the electronic waste drop-off, which is Saturday, June 10, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. At the RARE Town Hall, 50 North Franklin Street. Working and non-working equipment items excepted for recycling, AC units, all appliance, ballast, batteries, blenders, cell phones, chargers, copiers, CPUs, dehumidifiers, electrical equipment, fax machines, fire alarm equipment, laptops, lawn mowers, lawn fixtures, light fixtures, medical equipment, microwaves, modems, monitors, phones, pressure washer, printed circuit board, printers, radios, refrigerators, routers, scanners, scrap metals, servers, snow blowers, space heaters, speakers, strollers, swing sets, switchgear, toaster, towers, vacuum, wire. All fluids must be removed from lawn mowers and snow blowers that are being recycled. Wood console projection TVs, $30 each. Television below 27-inch, $15. Televisions larger than 27, $23. CRT tube monitors, $14 each. Flat-screen monitors are free. And we have one more. We have the 2016 Consumer Confidence Report, which details water information and issues for the Town of Holbrook is available online at www.holbrookmass.gov/2016CCR, and the Office of the Public Works Department, Treasurer's Office, and Town Clerk. Okay, next, we have Town Administrator?
I am the Chairman. So just a couple more announcements. Unfortunately, we have two letters of resignation that came in just this week. Leo Fuller, our Veterans Agent, is resigning from his position effective June 30. And Tim Stinson, who is the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, is resigning his position effective June 1. Now, so those are two positions that are filled by some very capable people, so we have a challenge in front of us to fill both of them. And then I just wanted to announce that, you know, Memorial Day is around the corner. We have our 10 o'clock parade and our ceremony that follows the parade right here in Mary Wells Park. The, there will also be ceremonies in the morning at both cemeteries in town, and there'll be more details coming. The road race will take off at 9 o'clock, and if folks want to sign up for that, they can go to racewire.com and just go to Holbrook, and it's all there. Now, on to my report. I spoke today to Ry Demasio, the owner of Skewer's Steakhouse. We talked about this at a prior meeting. And my suggestion is that we bring him in here for the May 24 meeting. He's, he's having, you know, he's working, he's working through some issues with the building. He's been renegotiating a little bit with the landlord, and I think it would be best if we put him on the agenda, and we'll send him a notice if the Board would like to bring him in here for our May 24 meeting, just to really get face-to-face and figure out what he, what his plan is and how close he is.
Would we be discussing anything that would be embarrassing to him that maybe it should be done? If you're talking about negotiating?
I don't mind meeting him, he, I don't mind meeting with him one-on-one and then reporting back to you folks. I know it was mentioned last time, you know, with the Licensing Board, and in some places they call folks in if not much is happening. I don't have a strong feel. I agree, you don't want to be talking about something that's, that's going, you know...
Maybe have yourself, have a meeting with him and...
I think that would be best, if you met with him.
Sure.
Not trying to throw something up, I think in fairness to him.
Yeah, that's fine. I can do that. I gave you each a copy of where I'm at with the annual report. I think the most important piece that I would want feedback on is the, is the first few pages where we have the, first of all, the format's the exact same as last year. Last year, we adopted a new format, so it's the same. And we have a report, the Selectmen's report to the residents of the town, and you'll see a few dot-dot-dots that still are blanks I'm filling in. My, my, my goal was to really just, you know, provide some really upbeat, you know, positive information about where we're at and things that have been accomplished. And really, front and center to that is under, is the 1.4 million in free cash. You know, that, that, that I think is probably, and it's a tribute to the folks sitting here and the whole team, but, and I wanted to double-check this with you, Beth, but I believe that's the highest certified free cash on record for the Town of Holbrook. So, yeah. I went back in the DOR webpage as far as I could, but I want to get with you before I, before we reproduce that statement. And so, I'll be working on this through, through the rest of the week, and, and we'll have it up on the webpage before town meeting. So if you have any, anything, I have one area there where I talk about other noteworthy accomplishments. You know, there's probably things I'm forgetting. If something comes to mind, let me know, and I'll, I'll plug it in there. Martin Faherty was in, we're gonna, we're looking into painting the safe to match the signs. So the black, the black on the signs and the gold leaf on the signs would be the color of the safe. The gold leaf would just be a little detail on the top. And also, the, if you notice, the, the war memorials with all the names on it on the, on this side of the building when you come in, the, the frames are all, you know, they're, they're oak, and I think they would pop a lot more if they were black. So we're gonna, he's gonna look into whether or not he can paint it and kind of spruce that area up and, and make it, make it more what it should be as a, as a tribute to our veterans. And that's all I have, barring your questions.
Question?
Yeah. Getting back to the Memorial Day, I know we don't have the Holbrook Pride Day anymore because of lack of participation, but I'd still like to do the flowers for the memorial out here the week before. We usually do that, and I'd like to get in touch with Noreen and set that up so we have a day, because there are certain individuals that do help do that every, every single year, and I'd like to keep that going, you know?
Yeah, and I know you did it last year. Was it, do you recall what, how that was done?
Terry, Terry Brady.
Yeah, they donate...
...checked the flowers.
Right, and the planting itself. I know, was it Saturday or was it done Friday? We had volunteers.
We do it the Saturday before, that's what we usually be doing, the Saturday, any volunteers, and maybe we can put it out there and maybe generate some more citizen participation.
Yep.
And get some more people involved, and maybe we can get that started again if we get a good turnout. So I'd like to get in touch with Noreen and post that and get that together and see if we can at least do that.
And maybe if we can get volunteers, instead of meeting, and they could meet right here, and if we have more than we need to plant flowers, we could, we could have trash bags and gloves handy and send them out picking up litter.
And the Girl Scouts were involved?
Right, Girl Scouts help out, they're big. Patricia Graley and Noreen herself are big at helping out, so.
Ruth Davy usually helps out planting, too.
So I have an email I have to put together to go out to all of the groups for Memorial Day. I will make a reference to the Saturday before and see, see if we can get some folks to commit to that.
Good. I'd just like to thank Veterans Agent Leo Fuller and Tim Stinson for their service to the town and wish them well with their future endeavors. So, in the new business, we have the year-end appropriation transfers for 2017.
Yeah, so we'll have Beth go over those.
Good evening. So, the Modernization Act that was passed for MGL Chapter 4433B makes it a little easier to do year-end transfers now. It took away the 3% or $5,000 threshold that we used to be bound by. So my hope was to get, as of May 1 through July 15, we can start doing these year-end transfers, so it was my hope to get as many as we already knew were going to be a problem to the Board and to FinCom this week, just to kind of get ahead of the game a little bit. Not to say we won't have any others, there could be, we're watching a couple other accounts, but I know that these are the problem areas right now. Tim, I don't know, do you want me to go through each one, or is the Board going to do that?
Yeah, maybe, maybe you should go through each one, and then at the end, we can do one motion.
Okay, okay. So I separated it into two sections. The top is salary, and the second part is non-salary accounts. And I also labeled them alphabetically, just to kind of make it a little simpler. So I'm just gonna start with salary. So salary A is to transfer $820 from workers' comp to the Town Accountant Clerical line item to pay assistant stipend and sick leave buyback for FY17 that wasn't budgeted. Salary B is to transfer $1,800 from assessor's expenses to principal assessor salary to pay for certification stipend and mileage. Salary C is to transfer $2,480 from assessor's expenses to assessor's clerical for the same reason. So a quick point on B and C, these items were budgeted in assessor's expenses, but they're payroll items. So when I noticed they were going through expenses, I moved it to payroll, and now we have to do the same with the budget to make it whole. Salary D is to move $70,000 from health insurance to fire overtime. Salary E is to transfer $350 from workers' comp to animal control salary for longevity that was paid but was not budgeted. Salary F is to transfer $6,444 from workers' comp to the Council on Aging salary line item to pay Connie Orlando's sick payout for her unanticipated retirement. Before I move on to non-salary, are there any salary ones you want to discuss?
Do you want to do a motion on those now and then go to the expenses?
Yeah, we can.
I think you could probably do a motion, you know, I move to approve the salary account transfers as presented.
Sure. I make a motion that we amend the budget as shown on the appropriation transfer as printed.
Second. Motion made, second by Selectman Sheehan. Are those in favor? Four to zero. Okay.
Great. So, non-salary, A, $32,000 from workers' comp to ambulance medical billing. This was part of that issue that came up this year with the ambulance receipt reserve for appropriation account. We were charging items there, but that account, you can't charge anything to, you can only vote something out of it, like we do at annual. So these charges had to be moved over to the ambulance department budget, which obviously did not have the money for it, so we knew that this was going to be coming. Non-salary B is to move $2,000 from workers' comp to Veterans Benefits. I did an analysis through year-end and talked to Leo, and it looks like it's just gonna come up a little bit short. Non-salary C is to move $1,000 from treasure collector salary to accounting expense, and this is for the purchase of a laptop for myself, actually, for the new software. I'm gonna be getting rid of the desktop so I can be a little more mobile. Non-salary D is to move $13,216.59 from library clerical salaries to library expense. Library clerical has a lot of money left over because of some shifting in his workforce this year. He needs this money because there was the electrical repairs that he just paid for, which is around $3,000, I think, and the water damage that just happened, the bills he got in were, I think, close to $10 grand. So he's waiting to pay those on this transfer request. And then the last item, non-salary E, is to move $236,000 from FY17 school budget to school transportation. And this, I'm not really sure how it happened last year, but the amount that the school needed in their allocation between what was in their budget versus what was in that transportation line, what was voted wasn't what they meant to be voted. So they're gonna be coming up short. So they're moving, they're asking to move it from their budget to the transportation line, which we have to do because they're voted separately. And that is it for the non-salary ones.
Questions? So I move that we accept the non-salary transfers as pointed?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the ambulance abatements for the quarter of January 1 through March 31, 2017. Anyone have any questions on this for the Fire Chief?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a routine quarterly action the Board takes, just to offset non-collectibles and contractual agreements. I ran a quick report this afternoon. We're less than a quarter percent off of our average over the past four quarters, so nothing unusual to report there. Encourage the Board to vote in favor.
While you're at the podium, you want to give your, do you have an update for...
I can, I can certainly do that. A very brief, a very brief update, as the Board met last Wednesday as well, the largest point of interest for the Fire Department was the Cooperative Fire History Day that the Holbrook Historical put on. It was a good success. I want to thank the Historical Society for their help and their interest in spearheading that, and hopefully we'll do it again soon. So that's my report as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I just wondered, what was the amount collected that we get paid for? What was that amount?
I might have it with me. Give me one second just to check the book.
Yeah.
Somewhere in the vicinity of 164,000 for the, for that, for this quarter, January to March, was the actual net receipts.
Okay.
And that's, generally speaking, that's right in the ballpark for quarterly receipts.
Very good. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Selectmen grant ambulance abatements for the quarter, including January 1, 2017, through March 31, 2017, in the amount of $212,396.13, as recommended by the Fire Chief, McPadden.
Second. Motion made by Selectman Moriarty, second by Selectman Sheehan. Are those in favor? Four to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Next, we have vote to authorize the Chairman to execute the Mass DOT standard contract forms to extend the original Chapter 90 contract for 10 more years. Any questions, Henneman?
I can just explain. So Chapter 90 is actually a state contract that we have. It's funded annually, but it's renewed every 10 years. So here we are at the 10-year mark.
Do we, do we know exactly how much Chapter 90 money we're receiving now that we get the streets?
Yeah, we're at, I, it's funny, I have a call-in to them, we keep playing phone tag, but we're at 2, I want to say it's 2:45 for this coming year.
Okay. That's with the new streets that were accepted?
That's with the new streets, yeah. And I, and I got a call-in to them, because I think the, the formula shifted a little bit, so I'm trying to figure out how much of it is new streets and how much of it is just, you know, what else went into that, you know, that, that shift. It's not, it's not a big shift, so I gotta, I want to sort of dissect it a little bit.
Yeah. I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Chairman to execute the Mass DOT standard contract forms to extend the original Chapter 90 contract for 10 more years. Second. Second. Motion made, second by Selectman Moriarty. Are those in favor? It's four to zero. Next, we have the renewal of the pool table license at Golden Pacific Restaurant, 478 North Franklin Street. Just, just an annual...
Yeah, we, I think you renewed a couple at the last meeting, but a different location.
Everything's paid up to date, so I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the renewal of pool table license, one pool table, in the name of Wang Jian Incorporated, doing business Golden Pacific Restaurant, 478 North Franklin Street, effective May 1, 2017, provided all taxes, fees, assessment, benefits, and any other municipal charges are paid to date. Second. Second by Selectman Sheehan. Are those in favor? Four to zero. Next, we have the discussion of the use of summer help in the Public Works Department. Tim, you want to speak to Henneman?
Sure, I will, but I will, I'll, I'll open it up and then defer to Ben for any details. So we have some money this year to hire some summer help, as we have done in the past. Last year, you had, by all accounts, a, a strong squad, and the majority of them are interested, have expressed an interest in returning. So I think we wanted to bring it up to the Board of Selectmen, just so people are aware, A, do we still want to go forward and hire summer help? And B, you know, the, the plan is, I believe, to hire, bring back the members from last year, and then you might have room for a couple more, but...
Yeah, we've got some money left in FY17 budget to bring two kids back for the month of June. I'll have enough money to cover them. And then FY18, we're allotted $21,000 in the budget, if they approve the budget, for seasonal hire, and we could bring four or five kids for July and August. So that's what we're talking about.
I think that'll be a good thing.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Most of the guys are going on vacation that time, and gives our kids some spending money.
Yeah, we had really good kids last year, hopefully, you know. I know three of them want to come back this year, so.
Okay.
They do help the Department out quite a bit.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to public safety updates. We already got the Fire Chief. We'll go with Director Hook.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. We're starting the FY18, to work on the FY18 911 Development Grant. The big item on the, the grant that we're applying for this year is the expansion of our communication center. So we, we have some rough plans, and we have an architect on board, so we're gonna submit that to 911, see if they'll give us some money. As part of that grant, we have a letter of attestation. It's basically, we do this every year, but I need the Board to support or vote on this, on Mr. Town Administrator Gordon or the Chairman to sign this letter of attestation that basically says Holbrook's still on board with this regional concept and, and moving forward. So every town that is involved in our regional center has to submit a letter along with the grant. So I apologize... So I apologize for the shortened notice, but the grant's due May 15th.
Any questions?
No.
Do you want to, you want to sign, sign it?
Doesn't matter to me, sure, I'll sign it, doesn't, doesn't make any difference to me, though.
So I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Town Administrator to commit the participation of the town of Holbrook in the N-E-R-E-C-C as set forth in the application for State 911 Department Development Grant.
Second.
Second by Selectman Moriarty, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve.
So, Ben?
Oh, Ben, sorry.
I, I would've kept you up, if I was thinking, I would've had you just stay out.
That's okay. Okay. Water meetings, water, excuse me, water meter readings are completed, so the bill should be going out the week of the 8th and 9th. We're continuing with street sweeping around the town. We're also continuing with plow damage that was caused during the winter, repairing burn work, looming seeding areas that were torn up. Also, the main roadways, I don't know if you've noticed, have been striped, center lines, fog lines. We're in the process of doing our own crosswalks. We'll continue doing that painting right up to Memorial Weekend. Also, the auto main work has been completed on Crescent Drive. Hopefully, everybody's happy on that street. And also, you've already touched on the hydrant flushing, which will be next week, and that's all I got.
Questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul?
Um, yeah, actually, I don't have any numbers for you, but as you know, May 1st is come and gone, so we're still putting in some receipts from the first. Well, of course, next week, I would've given you the update, but we're at town meeting. To let you know, percentage-wise, it looks like we're collecting more than we have in, you know, at this point in time over the last couple of years, so receipts are coming in okay. Water billings are up on the system already, so as Ben had mentioned, they're scheduled for mailing date, they're probably mailed on the 8th with a billing date on, on May 9th. Well, they are with a billing date of May 9th, so people should expect them to get them by Friday in the, in the mailbox. Other than that, I don't have any really, any other update. I'll give you one on tax, title collections, right after the sale of the property, I'll, I'll update, I'll update you to that point.
And Paul, everything's going smooth with the, with the auction on...
Yeah, the auction is...
Whatever the date is.
Yeah, Town Administrator mentioned, we've done the postings on the Board down there following the format that's set by the state. So they'll be open, if anybody wants to see that, they can come, anybody wants to see the property prior to that, they don't have to wait to that day, come in and see me, I have the keys and they can go get, you know, they can have a walkthrough, and I've already had three people, normal three that usually come to ours, have already come in and inquired on the properties, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout and raise a lot of money.
Very good. Thank you. Beth, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I can give a quick update on the conversion. So, as you guys know, as of 7/1, the software is going to be going live, and we're making really good progress, we're way ahead of schedule, which is great. The majority of users in Town Hall already have it on their computers. We have like a test environment going on that Diane and I and some of the individuals at the school will be kind of playing around with to see if there's any kinks or whatever. I have to thank Paul for installing a lot of them on the Town Hall, he did a lot of that legwork. And we have three trainings set up in June for users, so I'm confident that we're gonna have exactly what we need to make this seamless.
And that's for every department?
So July 1st, the go-live is for the general ledger and treasurer receipts. And then once that's complete, then the collectors and utility billing module will start, and then once that's complete, then the payroll, which is the last portion, will start. That payroll part is 1-1-18, go-live. So it's a little bit of a long process, but they do it step by step, just to make it not so overwhelming. That's going well so far. And that's it.
Thank you.
No?
Thank you very much. Okay, that's it.
I have another thing.
What's that?
I want to thank everybody that set up the last walkthrough through the high school on, on Sunday. It was quite a turnout, it really was. I think...
Well over 1,000 people?
Well, well over 1,000 people. I think some of the old students that came back, and there were some older graduates, seemed to have a good time seeing some of their old classmates, they were wearing some of their old leademan jackets, and it really was well-attended. I think it was a, a great way to send out the old, the old girl. So thank everybody that put it all together and then worked it that day. So it was a great turnout, it really was.
And, and the way they, you know, the, the concept of the decorating of the hallways was, I couldn't quite picture how that was gonna work out, but it was outstanding. I mean, you could see the different eras, it really, it really was a home run.
Each hallway, one hallway was the 50s and 60s, one was the 70s, one was the 80s, all on the first floor. Second floor was the 90s, 2000s, and 2000 and 10s. And each hallway was decorated by the people from those classes. It really was a great event, it really was, a great town event.
I found my picture as best dressed, but I was about 80 pounds heavier now.
And our local restaurants really made out on Sunday afternoon. They, it was, like I say, it was very well-attended, so like I say, hats off to the people.
A lot of traffic in town.
Yes, and it was well worth it.
Okay, anything else?
No.
I move that we adjourn to executive sessions, discuss strategy as it relates to litigation in Norfolk County Agricultural School, conduct strategy sessions, and conduct collective bargaining with union employees, Public Works, and not to return to open session by roll call vote.
Kevin, yes. Rick, yes.
Dan, yes.
Dan, yes.
Thank you, good night.